I don't know. We call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Would you like to have a roll call?
Oh, yes.
Ms. French?
Here.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Here.
Mr. Bracken?
Here.
Mr. Ellerby? Vice Mayor Ragoo?
Here.
May we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, agenda is approved.
We need to move on.
Oh my gosh. My script does not dummy proof, I'll tell you that. Alright, so can we all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Now it passes. And then we'll move on to public participation. So we have no presentations. Are there any public comments anyone would like to make? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. May we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any items to be removed? All in favor of approving consent agenda?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so that passes. So we'll move on to the first resolution. Heather will read that.
Sure. A resolution to hire a full-time preschool teacher in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Alright, and then we have Casey to comment on it.
Well, good evening. So this is a resolution to take an existing part-time preschool position that we've had for many, many years at Parks and Rec and turn that into a full-time position. And the driving force behind that is we took the preschool program itself last academic year and turned it from a part-time program into a full-time program so we could offer, at least during the academic year, full-time preschool and childcare for working families. They'd have that at least during the academic year. But with a part-time teacher, we couldn't continue that through the summer. So the full-time position will allow us to provide year-round childcare and education rather than just having to stop that in the summertime.
That's awesome. And then did I skip the motion?
Yeah, but it's okay.
Okay, okay. Do we need to do that now?
Yeah.
Okay, can we have a motion to adopt?
Seconded.
Do I have to say that again?
Yes. Are there any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
Well, I've been hearing a lot about the need for childcare and the fact that the city runs a preschool program and I think for people, a full-time program is really pivotal. So for working people, so this is awesome that we within the city are able to budget for this and take this on. And so you have sense of there's demand. There was demand for this last year and so you're meeting demand out there.
Yeah, yeah, our program was full almost the whole academic year last year. And I think 12 of our 14 spots for the fall are full as of right now, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That resolution passes.
Thank you.
And for the second resolution, Heather will read it.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement of cooperation with Butler County, Ohio pursuant to the provisions of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended.
Motion. Second?
Second.
Alright, what do you have, Sam?
Good evening. This is actually a fairly typical renewal that we've done for many years with the county. So with Oxford's population being under 50,000, we don't have a direct connection or contract with Housing, Urban Development. So we're a sub-recipient under Butler County. And so Butler County asked us to renew that. This would actually be a renewable agreement. And so this would allow us to continue what we've been doing. It's around 100 to 150,000 every year. And this would allow us to be able to utilize those funds for potentially different things in the future than what we have been doing. So it's just renewing that and we're just following what they asked us to do.
Any public comments? Oh my gosh. Wait, no, we already moved it, sorry. Carry on.
Public comments? Amy Shamen, 11 Heather Ridge Court. I appreciate that the city is doing this with the county and would love to see city as you continue to plan, to plan for that, especially to help those who are housing insecure and other needs in our community. Thank you.
Council discussion?
I think it's going to be really exciting that we're going to be able to think of the variety of things that can be used with CDBG money. Putting it to good use and completing the ramps, which is a wonderful accessibility improvement. But when you look at the scope of, you look at what our priorities are and you look at what the CDBG funding is, those things could really line up and we could do really interesting things in the future.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Move on to third resolution.
A resolution waiving the penalty for non-payment of the short-term rental tax, section 18310, for a period of one year after implementation.
A motion to adopt?
I'll move.
Second. Alright, Joe.
Thank you. Requesting the council approve a short-term rental penalty waiver resolution on August 3, 2021. Council approved the additional addition of short-term rentals to chapter 183 of the hotel and convention tax. After this, different software solutions were studied and a suitable solution for tracking short-term software rental properties in tax remittance. And then on February 15 of 2022, a resolution was passed by council authorizing the city manager into a contract with GovOS as our chosen software provider. And since the time we've been working with GovOS implementing the software solution, at this time, they're hopeful to go live sometime in July of 2022. And just as today, we're looking at July 29 as a go-live date, as long as we get all the training in prior to that. And we're suggesting to waive the penalty for the late filing fees for one year after we implement the GovOS system, since this is a fair and equitable request to the fact that this is a brand-new process for affected property owners. And we want to make sure there's a smooth transition as issues come up during the implementation of this type of process.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
I was wondering if it was possible to do it in six months, given that that's about when we'll be ready potentially, just because I'm itching to get funds in our housing fund to put the revenue to use.
But this is just a waiver on the late fee, right?
It's just a waiver on the late fee.
Yeah, but could we institute that just six months instead of a year, is what I'm saying?
We can do whatever council requests, but I thought a year was very favorable.
But I didn't want it to be, sorry. Yeah, I didn't want it to be cosmetic.
Just because it's a new process and people are going to be coming on in.
So can you talk about when? Is this on an annual basis? So for example, this was enacted in late 2021. So basically, people should be paying the tax since that date or really is it by year? So it's like 2022. So this is just a delay on the penalty, but people are still responsible.
Yes, they'll still be, they'll still be responsible for paying, but we did not, we didn't want them to start paying before we had a software solution in place because we only have so many people in track trying to go back and backtrack and trying to figure out who paid what, what was due.
So I guess it's, yeah, so what is the effective date of the tax, I guess?
So if I could try to, yeah, the January 1st is when the tax went into effect in 2022. So theoretically, they should be already charging the tax and holding it. But in reality, not a people, not everyone knows about it. And with going with GovOS, we'll be sending letters out to everyone. You've been identified as a short-term rental provider. By the way, we have this estimated tax that you owe. But you can imagine, if you didn't really know it was coming and you've had to have six months' worth of tax and oh, you know, it can be alarming. And so what we're trying to do is this first year is kind of soften that message. Hey, you're a short-term rental provider. We're going to be doing this tax. We're hoping to collect it quarterly, not monthly, so that Joe's team doesn't have to kind of track it down every month. And then in our view, waiving the penalties for just a year allows us to have a smooth transition. And then one year after implementation, then we would institute late fees for anyone not paying, is the way we're thinking.
So people should be aware of the tax. They should be collecting it as part of the fees that they're charging.
Yes.
And they should be putting it escrow. I mean, so they should be.
Yeah, so we have not done very much communication to inform them of this new law. We were hoping to be with GovOS sooner in the year, to be honest. And it's just taken us a lot longer than we thought to get this new program ready. And so there are probably a fair amount of people who are doing short-term rental who are not aware that they have this tax. And they're going to be taken by surprise. And so we want to give them some time to get that ready to go.
I think that was my confusion because I knew we weren't actually really collecting yet or pushing that issue. And I knew there were sort of two sides. And one is letting them know and giving them a fair chance. And then also on our side, are we ready to start collecting?
So both. So I think there are people who are going to be surprised. But that's what this whole new system is for, is it identifies them for us. It has a calendar tracking for us. It sends letters for us. So it's a really wonderful, robust system. But it's taken us a very long time to get ready to implement it. But we're this close.
And the fee itself is not insignificant. It's like 10% plus an additional 1%. So that part we're waiving.
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes. So then we'll move on to the fourth resolution. Heather will read that.
A resolution urging state and federal government to do something to confront epidemic gun violence by enacting common sense gun laws.
So moved.
Seconded.
And then David, you want to take that?
Yeah, so and this was just a response. I think many of us have felt great frustration and sadness in the parade of mass shootings that we've had in the United States. It's been numbing, such that in a val day, it was terrible but not shocking. Because it's not the worst. I mean, I think in Newtown, we were blown away such a thing could happen. And now we know such things are part of, unfortunately, the fabric of life in the United States. And so, and people, I think, look to their local governments to say, what can you do? And unfortunately, in Ohio, what local governments can do is really very little. At one level, it makes sense because our local laws shouldn't conflict with general laws, such as if you were a concealed carry permit holder, for example, moving between jurisdictions, it would be really confusing. So there's a certain logic. But I think that that our state, particularly our state government, but also federal government, in the fact that we're not able to act, we have to hope that they do. And, and I think that there's a lot of debate about this. But unfortunately, the only policy solution I see, particularly from our state legislature, is to add more guns to the system. Make it easier for people to carry them. Put them in schools with people who have had 24 hours of training. And it's one answer. I guess, you know, it has a certain logic to it. But in a country that's awash in guns, I think they say there are more guns than there are citizens in the United States now. Or it's, it's only a part of the solution. So I wish that we locally and other states, cities have enacted their own ordinances. They're able to take some local action. But in lieu of that, I think we just have to ask and plead that our state and federal lawmakers do something. And, and if you're from Ohio, the do something resonates because it was in 2019. But I guess it was Connor Betts shot 19 people in Dayton. Luckily, he was killed relatively quickly, but he killed nine people and wounded 17 others. And again, that's just one data point in a sea of mass shootings. 250 mass shootings in the United States in 2022 alone, and it's only June 21. So anyway, this ordinance is basically just a plea. I'm no gun control expert. And again, the mental health part of it and perhaps arming people in schools, you know, that's, but I think that like, I think common sense, people look at assault-style firearms and wonder. I think they look at the fact that 18-year-olds can purchase assault-style firearms and they wonder. High-capacity magazines, bump stocks, universal background checks, mental health checks with a required waiting period, a universal database, and closing the loophole so people could just can't sell guns to each other. It just makes common sense. It wouldn't solve all the problems, but it would do something. So I could just ask that. And I think we ask that our legislators do something.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to David and really great job. I opened it and I mean, right, like, these are things that an organization that I work for advocate for. And common sense is the word or the term that we keep coming back to. So I wished I had something to add, but you did a great job. And so thank you for doing that. And thank you to city staff. I've noticed them the last couple of weeks have been communicating about, you know, where can we and can't we set guidelines? So I appreciate all the work that's happening behind the scenes. And for the person who submitted public comment about this, for doing their research and just, yeah, I got asked a lot when I was running for election because this is what I do. What can we do? And as Counselor Pretheridge pointed out, it's not much, but at least we've done something. So I appreciate it. So thank you, David.
Yeah, it has my support. All these measures, as far as I've seen, and I've looked into this pretty deeply, has a consensus of experts that support that this reduces gun violence deaths. What hasn't is arming teachers, which I only know of one study, and it did not say that that was positive. It actually had the opposite correlation, which might be an issue of causality, or it could be because it's increased aliens of the issue itself. So we do what we can here and we promote what would be effective policy as far as we can.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes. So we'll move on to ordinances. So for, we have one first reading. Joe will take that. Heather will read it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 3654 supplemental budget ordinance number five to make supplemental appropriations for fiscal year 2022.
Yes, this goes along with the first resolution of the night. An increase in the salary and wages by 17,600 and fringe benefits by 9,630 for the full-time preschool teacher position in the fall of 2022. And this is figuring it from August 1 through the end of the year.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
We need to have a motion in a second for the.
I move.
That's just a first reading.
Oh, is it a resolution though?
No.
It's a first reading.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thanks.
Council discussion? Sounds great.
We want a full-time school teacher. It needs to be paid for, so I'm glad that it was in the budget to.
Alright, second reading, which does need motions in seconds. Okay, so Heather could read that one.
Sure. An ordinance accepting the recommendation of the planning commission and approving a conditional use for a major change to the 2009 Talawanda High School conditional use to add a bus garage slash maintenance facility in the city of Oxford with conditions.
Seconded.
Sam show.
Alright, I'm actually not going to do a repeat presentation tonight since there hadn't been any changes either from staff or the applicant, no interior design changes to it. It's actually in process for building permit review as well. So they're wanting to move forward. So happy to answer any questions, though.
Okay, any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
Only just to add that I hope that as we move forward with climate action, that Talawanda School District, when there are opportunities to electrify their fleet, it would be good for their neighbor. They could do away with fuel storage and the noise and the fumes. Hopefully, that could be sooner rather than later.
I agree. And also reduce the cost of gas if we're helping.
Ready for the roll?
Okay.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ragoo?
Yes.
And that passes. We'll move on to the second one. He could read that.
An ordinance approving a conditional use permit application to allow for a new hotel to be located at 5470 College Corner Pike, Oxford, Ohio 45056, with conditions.
Okay, a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Sam said nothing to add.
Nothing new to add. This is for the Holiday Inn Express on College Corner Pike across from the Wildberry Warehouse, just for location information for anyone watching.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
Well, I just, I really appreciate the work, the app, the A, that the applicant's making the investment, B, that staff worked with them so thoroughly on this and that there was resolution to all the issues. And so looking forward to them moving forward with this.
Yeah, that's the only thing I was going to say. We can just reaffirm that everything's good with our fire chief. Right.
Okay, ready? We'll vote on that.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ragoo?
Yes.
And that passes. And we'll move on to our third and last second reading.
An ordinance accepting the recommendation of the planning commission and approving the final plan development for Owl's Landing located along Brookville Road in the city of Oxford with conditions.
So moved.
Second.
Nothing to add?
Just a tiny bit of explanation, no changes to it. This is the 86 lot residential development near the southern entrance to the community park on Brookville Road. So this is nearly the final step to allow them to move forward. So the final plan development, there'll still be a subdivision plot coming as well.
Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
I just really, it turns out that our, this development is really going to help us with our Oxford area trail for reasons that are kind of beyond our control, the alignment that we were hoping for as a phase four and along Brookville Road. The hope was is that we would be able to get all the way to the southern entrance of the park. But because of landowner issues, that was kind of infeasible. So the fact that this developer was willing to work with us and dedicate easement so that the trail could connect is going to enable us to get the grant. So this, this has been, been a good advocate to work with in my impression. So, and this should be a good development.
Hey, Brookville?
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Ms. French?
Yes.
Mr. Pretheridge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ragoo?
Yes.
And that passes. And then we'll move on to announcements and communications. Our Assistant City Manager Jessica Green.
Not many. Mayor Snavely and City Manager Elliott made it to Luxembourg safely, maybe minus some luggage at first, but they're, but they're there and representing us with our sister city. So we hope they have a great time. Wanted to let you know that we had a visit with OKI and ODOT last week and began the first initial phases of planning for phase five of the Oxford area trail that will travel from Talawanda High School to Talawanda Middle School. I call this one the Big Kahuna because of the railroad crossing. But it was a really great meeting, lots of questions, lots of driving around, looking at land and streams and crossings. And so that was an exciting visit. And we're hoping to do construction on that portion in '25, '26. So that was a great visit. Also wanted to let you know that staff are beginning to do our first and second quarter goals tracking. So we hope to have a presentation for council at our next meeting to kind of let you know where we are year-to-date on the goals that we established for 2022. And then finally, we've asked our staff to begin preparing research for the items that you raised during the council retreat back in March to bring forward to you during the budget season. So you understand those budget implications that may or may not happen with those things that you've asked us to do. So we'll be bringing that forward to you over the next couple of months. Thanks.
Mike?
Good evening. Just a quick update on Main Street reconstruction. We've got a great contractor, Prouse Construction. They've made great progress. They're ahead of schedule. So with some continued good weather, we expect that to be finished before their contract date. Also, thanks to our other contractors that are working, it's hot, brutal work to be doing concrete removal and pouring concrete this time of year. But contractors are working hard. They're working on our curb gutter sidewalk assessment program and our CDBG handicap ramp program and getting ready for the extension of the North Locust Sidewalk. So lots going on and thanks to them for working through this heat. So, thank you.
Chief, do you have anything?
Sorry, I don't want to risk your personal record of finishing a meeting. So I'll hurry. But, but I just wanted to say, just over on the west side of the city, we've had a lot of car break-ins. So a lot of times in the summer, we feel like we get, it's just nice and nothing's happening. And, but we have had a rash of car break-ins out Contreras Country Club Drive area. So please lock your cars at night. These aren't forced entry. These are, you know, cars that are left unlocked. So just keep that in mind. And sometimes just we have a tendency to have that increase over the summer. And then I just wanted to put a plug in for Red Brick Friday, since we won't have a council meeting July 1. It'll be a little smaller footprint, but it's kind of going to be a public safety themed. So a lot of kids' activities with painting the cruiser and doing, you know, with the finger paints and stuff like that. So come up and see us on that. And then Casey will probably talk about the next two days, which will follow.
I need to add that at the Red Brick Friday, we're playing red light, green light on the street with hippity hops. It's going to be really fun. And everyone should come.
Exciting. Joe, do you have anything?
I guess I have to talk now. Yeah, so on Saturday, July 2, the parade is back in the Uptown Parks. We haven't had it in 2020 or 2021. So that will be back. And there'll be a special music fest that night as well. So the parade's at 6:30. The music fest is at 7. And then on July 3, we'll do our big event out at the community park from 5 to 10 with the fireworks at 10 o'clock. So we'll have all the usual inflatables and games and everything. All the entertainment at the event is free. There is a $5 per car fee to park within the park. But of course, riding your bike or walking in is, is no charge. So I think that's it. Thanks.
Sam, do you have anything?
There hasn't been a whole lot said about the Oxford Tomorrow Comprehensive Plan in several weeks, but rest assured, it's still being worked on. There's been several back-and-forth conversations between staff and the consultant, MKSK. So for anyone who's interested in just catching up to speed on where it's at, oxtreetomorrow.org. And then we hope to have a public meeting later on in August, which will present the draft plan for public feedback. And then there'll be a council adoption later on in the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather?
Nothing, thank you.
Do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Alright, council.
Just that I'm looking forward to the Oxford Palooza of Red Brick Friday and then the parade on the 2nd and then the festival on the 3rd. And then we're back here on the fence. So looking forward to seeing everybody at the fence.
Nothing for me today.
So not to dampen the overall warm mood, but I was just struck, not this past Monday, yesterday, but a week ago, we had some pretty intense weather in Oxford. And it was coincidental because council created a climate action steering committee and we signed on to something called the Global Covenant of Mayors, which we've been focusing a lot on our climate action in terms of reducing our emissions. But you're required by that process to do a vulnerability assessment and a resilience plan, which sometimes seems like, well, why should we do that? Because we're just trying to like tackle the problem. But why they make you do it is because the climate is changing and it will create vulnerabilities that cities will have to deal with. And we've been talking a lot in that, like, what are the main hazards, looking at the science from the Midwest. Warmer temperatures, more intense precipitation events, more intense mesos, gales, basically thunderstorms. And we were talking about these. This is what the models predict. And then last Monday, we had, well, last week, as you know, we had record-breaking dew points. We had a storm that really spared us locally in terms of power outages, but it caused a lot of damage. Our city engineers just, these cars just spared, was spared. So we lost big trees. But many people in the region had a one-two punch of losing their power, a terrible storm, and then losing their power for days in some of the hottest weather. And so really, unfortunately, what that was, was confirmation of this is the kind of stuff we're, we're going to have to deal with because the incidents of these are, they're already warmer and more storms. But some predictions, we may have 20 to 30 days above 100 in the Midwest by the end of the century, which is our children's lifetime. So I just wanted a little highlight that we've been doing it in a committee and it's the committee work, but I think ultimately it's going to be really important. Like, how do we as a city be prepared to bounce back? Like, if those kind of events happen more and more often, do we have cooling centers? And, and I think that we're just beginning a conversation about now. The city's been doing emergency management planning. But yeah, we had to. doing emergency management planning, but, yeah, we had two inches of rain in a day, the water was up and over Locust Street again. Like, a year ago this time, we had remarkable rain, incredible rain. So it, it's just something that I think the city, we're gonna have to weave into what we do and how it fits in the comprehensive plan, I'm not exactly sure, but I think cities are gonna have to help the communities navigate change in times. So that's just kind of update that that's going on, and I think that we're hoping to bring to council in October, the mitigation plan and the resilience plan, so, you know, maybe in September or early October. Okay, so that's just, give you an update on what's going on with the Climate Action Steering Committee.
Thank you. And then I just want to say that, I previously said, one of the most proud achievements on council has been our expenditure care funding. And recently, I feel really proud about the way that y'all have responded towards childcare, because it's something that, I can't believe how, like, agile it's almost been. And I think that we have such a huge ability to make a big impact in families' lives, and even maybe attract more families if we have more daycares for a very small amount of money. So I'm so excited about it, I'm really proud of, you know, having a full-time person, so I'm really excited about that. And I'm also, the more we hear about PFOS and these forever chemicals, I am so excited about the water softening system. And I'm really excited that we're not making the pipeline, because I think that this, in the end, is the more proactive, better choice, as far as, we might not have the big resilience with the greater water supply, but the fact that we will not have these chemicals in this town is so awesome. I mean, EPA's not even regulating it, and they're coming out with more and more studies of how bad it is and how long it stays and the damage on the body, so I'm just really proud, and so I just want to say thank you for both those things. On that note, we will, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, adjourn.